All right, let's go ahead and get started. Hey, we sure appreciate everyone that's here in the chambers right now and all those in TV land, those hundreds of millions that are watching, so you guys know. So it's been good. I've asked Scott to give us an opening prayer, if he would.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be here this evening at this city council meeting and thankful for this wonderful city of Spanish Fork. We're thankful for our elected officials, the mayor and the city council, for their service and ask that thy Spirit and thy blessings be with them this evening as they make decisions for the city, that their minds will be enlightened and that they can make those decisions that will be in the best interest of the city as well as its residents. We are thankful for the residents of this city and the good that they do throughout the community and ask that will bless them as well. And thankful for the employees of this great city for the great work that they do. Again, Father, we are so grateful for all the blessings that we have and pray that thy Spirit will be with us and be with our families this evening and do so in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Scott. I ask a council member back to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a lot of people here for some department. Chris, are you in charge of this? Get us going.
Well, Mayor, Council, we have a very prestigious award in Public Works with seven departments. One of them gets the Division of the Year Award and this last year it was our water department again, which is significant because this award's only been around for four years and this is the second time they will have received this award. The first time they received it was because of bringing a unaccounted-for water loss from in the 30s, I think it was like 33 percent, is that right, John? It's closer to 40 percent, 40 percent, down to, right now we're at around 14 or 15 percent for unaccounted-for water and they have a great program in place which they have since augmented with leak detection and a number of other things. So they've taken it, I think back when they got the award, they had taken it from 40 down to around 20, but now it's gone all the way down to below 15 percent, which is really great. So they just keep working, but the main reason why they get the award this time is a very successful water conservation program, which has gained statewide attention and even national attention and they've done a great job implementing the program with the smart irrigation controllers and they kind of tested some ideas out that didn't quite work and then came up with what they learned from that and this program's been very successful and it's been successful so far this year as well and everyone participates. There's a lot that goes into this. We have the meter or the sprinkler technicians that actually go and do the installs, but our whole water department is in support of that and does a lot of training and a lot of work to support those efforts and so, and it's not just that, they've also cleaned out the reservoir and did an outstanding job on that. We have good sand now at the reservoir. We also have another bar around for people to climb out easier on and they've done some things to reorganize their department so that each individual has ownership in one part of the water division and it's great for me to see the pride that they take and what they're in charge of, but also the teamwork that they have. If someone needs help with something they're in charge of, they all pitch in and they help and they do a good job. And then the last thing I just want to mention is with the addition of our meter technician, it seems like we are finding a lot of problems with the meters and getting them solved and so our reports and our billing and everything is becoming more accurate. So a lot of great things happening in the water division. In four years, they'll have won this award twice and it's a great accomplishment. So, John, if you could come up with all of your staff.
Go on up, don't be shy or bashful. That's all right, because the one thing we want to do, because I really thought the reason you guys all came here is because you wanted to sing "Happy Birthday" to John. Well, isn't that what they're here for, to sing "Happy Birthday" to you?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you waters. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, boy. Payback.
Just keep my water on.
So, one last thing that I failed to mention is last year was the lowest water year on our records. We'd never seen a year with as little water as what we had last year. Now, this year's a lot different, but last year it was a very severe drought and there were no water restrictions in Spanish Fork. We were able to keep the water on and that's something that these guys all take pride in too. So, anyway, some great things happening in the water division. Maybe I'll read the names and then if you could shake hands with John and me. First one is Paul Taylor.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate everything you guys do.
You get some.
This guy. You guys want to hug?
Eric Stauffer.
Good job, Eric. Yes.
Good work.
We have Chris Harmon and Truman Moore, they're not here right now, but we'll get those to them.
Craig Bishop.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate everything you guys do.
Bailey Onder.
Thank you, young man.
Good work.
Kyle Andrus, he's not here either. Don Spivey.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Wyatt Walden.
Thank you.
Good job, my friend.
Mayor, thank you.
It's Don.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Glad to go.
Good job.
Good work.
Jed Otison. Jason Jarvis. Brian Grace.
You might as well get them all.
Thanks, guys.
Nick Harrison.
Thank you, my friend.
Good work.
And then, of course, John Waters.
Good job.
That was, we want you to have a happy birthday.
Nor you didn't.
Sean the Dark.
Thank you.
Let's all line up here and get a picture with the group and the council.
All of you come up again. Right, right up here.
I'm late for dinner.
You're late for dinner. Line up there. This is going nationwide, so don't worry about it.
Okay, one, two, three, four. Okay, thank you.
Ready to suck it in?
Are those new?
All right, hey, we appreciate all our employees and it's awesome to be able to recognize those that go a little above and beyond and we appreciate each and every one of you out there, so thank you again. And you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, so just so you know.
See you later.
Wait, wait, we're talking about water, bud.
I gotta talk to you about that later.
I knew that, clear them out in a hurry. All right, good job. All right, let's move to public comments. Anyone from the public that'd like to come and address the mayor or the council? Seeing none, we will go to council comments. Let's go with Councilmember Beck.
Oh, good.
I know you want to.
He thought that through. I wanted to go first because I think I have the best news to announce.
I figured you did.
Our own Spanish Fork, Miss Spanish Fork, Dejana Talba, she was Miss Spanish Fork 2017, won Miss Utah on Saturday night. She had a very intense week and it was super exciting. She won talent the night of, she performed her talent and we're just super proud and excited for her and look forward to watching her this next year serve our state of Utah. And then Morgan Olson, Miss Spanish Fork 2018, she was recognized by Miss Utah and won the Golden Miracle Maker Award for the Children's Miracle, let's see, for the Children's Miracle Network Hospitals. So she, I think, tied to bring in the most money for those hospitals, so some great recognition for our young women up there and we're excited for them. Youth City Council, for anyone ninth to 12th grade this upcoming year, you can hop online and register to be a member of the Youth City Council. We usually have about 60 youth involved in that and it's a great opportunity to get kids involved, to serve, give back to the community. They have an activity a month, are very involved with different activities during Fiesta Days, so that's super fun for them. And it also looks great on job and college applications, so if you have youth that are looking for something different, that's a good opportunity there. And Fiesta Days, our next city council, will go over all of that. We'll have the grand marshal here and our Fiesta Days Committee. Our magazine is getting proof to be in mailboxes just right after the Fourth of July, so we're excited and grateful for all of the volunteers that are involved in that. And then, just a big shout out of gratitude to those who helped with the health fair on Saturday, that was a super fun event. I know, Mike, you worked closely with so many people there, but Mike, Susan Chapman, our Parks and Rec, I think my favorite event was watching our city manager, Seth. Seth, do you know how high up you were on that when you were throwing swag from the fire ladder?
Fifteen feet.
My gosh, it was not 15 feet, it was really high. It was, wow. So that was a great event and I appreciate all of the effort to not only help residents with their physical health, but their mental health as well. So that's everything from me.
Thanks. Councilman Scobes.
Mayor, just two small things to report on. We met last week, last week or last, within the past week or so, with the Veterans Council and the Parks and Rec Department. Veterans Council will be the point of contact for any issues with the building, scheduling between the two veterans organizations, but the handover to the city is in tow. It hasn't been completed yet, there's a few details to hammer out still, but Parks and Rec Department were on board, were very gracious in giving their time and their ears to the veterans and taking over that building for scheduling. And so it was a productive meeting, good to have the veterans there. Again, city staff were very helpful, very agreeable and things were moving along smoothly with that. Also, just to report, this Thursday, Thursday morning, I have the Utah Lake Commission Board Meeting. Some of the agenda items talk about the June sucker fish, some of the Provo, the Provo River Delta Restoration Project, the algae bloom is a continuing topic and so I'll have more to report after that meeting, but just so that you and the citizens are aware that that meeting and all of our committee meetings are ongoing, so that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilman Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things to report. I had a League of Cities and Towns Board Meeting this morning to discuss legislative issues during the interim, it's going to be a busy time that the legislature will meet on a host of issues, but mainly on some tax issues and just thankful for the League, our membership in it and the leadership training it provides us to help navigate those things that come along from the state level and how we can coincide and mesh together with that stuff. One picture that I took of the slide up there that leads me into discussing Fit City, the Active and Healthy Fair that Stacy mentioned, was we constantly talk about the balance of power between municipalities and the state level, just like the state does with the federal level. And David Church, the legal counsel for the League, had a couple of slides that deal with the constitution of the state of Utah, but one Supreme Court decision that he put up on the slide and I had to take a picture of it says, "The legislature has granted general powers to cities and counties to enact all necessary measures to promote health, safety, morals, and welfare, so no specific grant of authority is necessary." And he said that that was, that's not normal throughout the rest of the United States, throughout, all states don't have that power like we do and that's, it spoke to me when he put that slide up there, that I had to take a picture of it, that it coincided with what we did on Saturday. So just a cool event that, again, I've said it a number of times, but the cavalry's not coming for helping our citizens take care of themselves better, both mentally and physically as far as health goes. And so I'm proud of what we've done, the steps we've taken to have a fair like that and promote health and wellness. I think the end result is generally a great one for the city. So thanks to everyone that came out, it's going to just continue to get bigger and better every year. I don't know how we topped Isaac Osceada coming and hanging out with us, but thank you, Mayor, for lining that up. Brandon would not arm wrestle him, I don't know what the deal was. Oh, he didn't want to, he backed out.
Well, you know, when I first met Isaac, he wasn't very big, but after being in my house so much, he ate me out of house and home. That's what he ended up.
That's how we got that way, huh? Cheryl's cooking, holy cow.
He's a great guy.
Yeah, great guy, very generous with his time with people. The one story that I've told a couple folks is there was a young boy from Salem, one of the pictures that Isaac signed was when he was at the University of Utah playing football and he had a football up like this because he recovered a fumble and in the background were the, were a couple of USC Trojans that, they were playing USC at that game and a kid from Salem comes up and says, "Hey, that's my cousin, Porter Guston," in the background with USC there. And Isaac, without missing a beat, says, "Who do you think I took the ball from?" It was, he was, he was great to have there, signed a bunch of stuff, just thankful for everybody that made that a success in promoting it. Angie working hard on all the stuff that led up to it and then that day and Dale, just everybody, you know, I miss every time I try to name people, but Karen and Mark and Janice and everybody, everybody that just helped to make it a great day. I'm just excited to see where it continues to go and how it catches on with the rest of the state, because really, in the end, for the amount of money, you know, capital invested into this, I think the return on it is a great thing to see that many people come out and be focused on health and wellness, especially in the booths too, 30-some-odd booths that are coming to talk to us about how we can be better, better, healthier lives. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Yeah, Mayor, all I would add to that is just, you know, Mike isn't really saying much about himself, but we know how much time and effort he puts in and really appreciated watching him. One of the kids that I gave a prize to, I asked him, "Hey, what's your name?" And he tells me and I said, "Where are you from?" And he says, "Springville." And I said, "Springville?"
Give it back.
I didn't say give it back, I said, "Go back and ask your council members why they don't do stuff like this." So I didn't skip a beat, Mayor, I thought you'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I did think you would.
But it was, it was a lot of fun, it was an awesome turnout and we had a great, great time there as a family. As far as the chamber goes, tomorrow we'll have our new networking luncheon, it'll be at Canyon View Park, up at the pavilion up there, and so we invite anybody representing the business community, if you'd like to come up and enjoy lunch. If you bring somebody that has never been there before, it's free for you and the guest, of course, so invite you to do that. We'll have a ribbon cutting on Thursday for Ryan Mortgage, which is in Payson. So I've just recently mentioned the city to the north, now the city to the south is joining our chamber. Obviously, some things are going on right and Ryan Mortgage, somebody that's been around for a long time, they're joining, we'll go over there and cut a ribbon on Thursday. So, Mayor hasn't kept his campaign promise to build a wall and make Payson pay for it. There are no walls, right, Mayor?
Uh, maybe.
Maybe, okay. Also, last week, we met and had our farmer's market meeting, had a lot of, a lot of our growers, local growers show up and ready to represent. The last Saturday of July is the first time, first week, we're behind schedule. One of the farmers mentioned that he's out about $20,000 in seed that got ruined because of, you know, how the frost and that this year and so, so he's, not only is he behind, he also had a loss, but I just, my heart goes out to farmers and what they do to bring us this great local crop to our farmer's market, which is the best farmer's market in the state of Utah. So that was fun, it starts to come together and here we go. So, again, look forward to that end of July. First, last Saturday of July will be the first week of the farmer's market. Wanted to make sure Mayor knew that yesterday was National Garbage Man Day. I don't have anything else to report from the garbage district and a week from tomorrow, I will meet with the Water Quality Board up in Salt Lake and take our very own Corey Pierce along with me as we begin looking at things that we're going to do to improve our wastewater treatment facility. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to let the citizens know that the senior center is going to be closed for the next two months for summer and then just also a thanks to those employees at the senior center and the good job they do. I think about Verna Jo, our director of the center, and how many grants that she has applied for that has improved that center, both the physical building and also the health of those centers, our seniors, to come down there and have exercise equipment and all different kinds of Tai Chi and other programs that are going on that's helping to improve our senior citizens' quality of life in this town and I'm grateful for what they do. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to report on, this past week, I was able to attend our American Public Power Convention. As you know, Spanish Fork has their own power company with five other cities. Went down there to a convention in Texas and a lot of good information there. You can tell that our agency's working hard to make sure we maintain our power and stay ahead of the curve on all the new technologies that are out there and resources that we need to have to continue to provide power for our cities and so that was a very productive conference. Also, I'd like to let everybody know that this weekend, Friday and Saturday, is Icelandic Days. Starting Friday, they're going to piggyback with our food trucks in the park and so we'll have that and then Saturday, they'll have all their entertainment and children's activities that, we've got the Pioneer Village and all that fun stuff. That'll start at 10 o'clock and goes till 5 o'clock. Then Sunday, they have a heritage fireside from 7:00 to 8:30, so it's a great opportunity to come and see where we, a lot of us came from. One time, Spanish Fork had the largest colony of Icelanders in the nation and so it's kind of interesting. Anyway, that's all I've got, let's move on to the consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
And a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's go to a public hearing, ordinance 12-19, Amendments to Title 15 Regarding Accessory Apartments. And you're on the clock. And with the first round.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This has really been a pleasurable project to work on, I appreciate the council's patience with us. It was January of 2018 when we got some direction as staff from the council to start the process of evaluating whether we should make changes to our requirements for accessory apartments and the time that we've taken, I think, has been well-used, yet I apologize that it's taken as long as it has to get to this point. The interactions that we've had with the public over the course of the past year really have been wonderful, they've been enlightening, it's been helpful to have the input that we received, we've received and we've corresponded with several hundred residents in different ways as we've looked at the prospect of making changes and the direction that we might want to go as a community and, you know, like the appreciation that we have for the, appreciation we have for the council and again, your patience, we also really do appreciate the time that residents have taken to be a part of the process, to share their thoughts and to help influence what we'll talk about here in just a minute. Accessory apartments come in a few different shapes and forms. I think we most often maybe know those as mother-in-law apartments or basement apartments, it's kind of the typical form that they take, at least in our part of the world, and in as much as they're within, you know, the structure of that home, we would consider those to be attached accessory apartments and that could happen in a basement, it could maybe be next to some other living quarters, it could come in a number of different forms. And there's another way to do accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units and that's detached, to maybe have them in a carriage house, maybe to convert a garage that's not attached to the home into some type of an apartment or maybe to put an entirely separate home on a, as an ADU, another way to do it. And I just want to be clear that for what staff's presenting tonight and what we're recommending that the council consider, we are only talking about attached accessory apartments for now. I think the idea of potentially permitting accessory apartments in detached structures really is worth exploring, but I think for a few reasons, we're probably best off to set that aside for now and to take this step forward. set that aside for now and to take this step forward and maybe to address that at a later date, quite possibly sooner than later. But, again, for tonight, we're just talking about those configurations where the accessory apartment would be attached to the home. I'm gonna cut to the chase. These are some of the existing requirements and some notes on how they would change with what's being proposed. One of the things that we're not proposing change is the, and for me, this is really the essence of what an accessory apartment is. So, by definition, the owner of the property has to reside on premise. That's how we define them today. That's how most communities define an accessory apartment, as opposed to a duplex, really, is what it would be if you didn't have the owner of the property residing on premise. And in short, we're not recommending that that change. In fact, I think it's very important that that stay the same and that the owner be required to reside on the property. Likewise, relative to the number of, of accessory apartments that someone could have, even if maybe there's a property that, right now, someone would not be allowed to have an accessory apartment on, and that changes to where they are permitted, you know, maybe through a zoning change or some of the other things that we'll talk about here. Still, that limit of one accessory apartment per property, we are recommending that that remain the same and not change. So, uh, you cannot have today, or with the changes, more than two dwelling units on a property in the zoning districts that we'll talk about. Off-street parking, we'll talk about this in a little more detail in a minute, but in essence, we're recommending that the off-street parking requirement remain the So that two spaces per unit, or might as well just say four spaces for a property that has an accessory apartment are required. And again, I'll touch on that in, in just a minute, a little more detail. We'll look at this relative to some maps in just a second, but right now, there are only two zoning districts in Spanish Fork where accessory apartments are allowed, and they're kind of just in the historical part of the community here. We're suggesting that, propose changes that a number of other districts, at least relative to the recommendation that we're making, would be potential candidates for accessory apartments. Right now, there's a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size. We recommend that that be reduced to 8,000 square feet. Building code, in essence, this really wouldn't change, except that I do believe, um, with kind of the broadening of the opportunities that would come if these changes are adopted to allow for accessory apartments, I think our building inspection staff will be much more involved in some of the fundamentals as to how those get constructed, some of the basics that are required for accessory apartments. And as we've talked about before, you know, that, that's one area that I think has been particularly challenging to really understand, relative to what the city's options are in terms of, um, adopting regulations that, that are pragmatic and functional, but also regulations that really will serve the community in terms of making sure that these dwellings are safe and not hazardous to anybody that lives on, on premise or in any way a nuisance for a neighborhood. Some of the bigger changes, and I would say bigger because I think right now, some of our policies really are a deterrent for folks that want to do things the right way. Today, we require people to pay impact fees to be able to have a legal accessory apartment. That bill would be into the thousands of dollars for anyone to have. Again, that, that particular use of their property, we're recommending that, that that requirement be removed. Separate electric meters, I think this is something that, from a lot of perspectives, we're really ready to, to change. I don't think we any longer see a lot of value in requiring separate electric meters for accessory apartments. Likewise, that, I think, has been a deterrent for folks that may otherwise have, have worked with the city to have a legal accessory apartment, who have perhaps instead decided to go a different route and just have an accessory apartment. We're recommending that, that requirement to have separate electric meters be removed as well. And, you know, one of the things that we think is very important in terms of managing a program of having accessory apartments in the community, again, on a fairly broad basis, and making sure that those apartments are an asset to neighborhoods, to the city, doing what we can to make sure that they don't, in any way, shape, or form, change the, the real character of a single-family neighborhood, anyway become a nuisance or a, um, again, a detriment to their neighbors. Right now, we simply require folks to register to utility accounts when, when it's a legal accessory apartment, we know it's there. We will do some other things to, for example, make sure that that owner occupancy requirement is maintained over time. And as such, there's a process that people will go through to register their apartments with the community, and we'll do an annual check. Frankly, I think it'll be a fairly simple thing that will be akin to what we do with businesses that have business licenses in the community, where we check, for example, to make sure that they have the necessary registrations in place with the state, the state tax commission, and some different things of that nature. We don't anticipate doing inspections of homes on any kind of a regular basis, on an annual basis, or really after, perhaps, an initial inspection that we do to determine that, again, some life safety things have been properly accounted for. We don't anticipate getting back onto people's properties unless, maybe there's a, a concern or an issue where we get invited to do an inspection for some reason. So, in short, those are the changes that we're recommending that the council consider. Just by way of a little bit more information, right now, the properties that are shaded with that blue color here, those are zoned R16 or R3, so provided that property in those zoning districts today is 10,000 square feet or larger, somebody could meet that off-street parking requirement, the other things that we talked about, properties in those areas are eligible to have accessory apartments right now. And, you know, for me, this is maybe the, the most significant part of what we're recommending that the council consider, provided that somebody has a property that's at least 8,000 square feet in size, and again, can meet those other requirements. These are the parts of the community that potentially would be available for people with a, a desire to have an accessory apartment. I mentioned that, and wanted to touch on parking in just a little bit more detail. Tandem parking. We are recommending that we just, we are very clear about the idea that if you have a two-car garage and you have space for two vehicles in a driveway, so for us, that would mean that your driveway would have to be at least 20 feet deep so that you could park two cars behind that two-car garage. We call that tandem parking, where there are cars in front of or behind one another. And with that arrangement, we'd count that as four parking spaces. And we've talked a little bit about the value that we might get out of requiring an additional space if that is how somebody is, um, counting four parking spaces. So, maybe somebody would have to pour some additional concrete or something like that off to the side of a, a garage so that you just have that additional room. Again, if tandem parking was the configuration someone was using to, um, meet that four-space parking requirement, does that make sense relative to tandem, what I'm talking about there? And, uh, I absolutely believe that one of the more important things to get right relative to accessory apartments is the parking requirement. That's really what we get complaints about. I'm also sensitive to the concern that we heard from some people during focus group discussions that we had, which is, well, we don't want our neighborhood to look like parking lots, you know, if people pave significant parts, maybe of their yards, and, and we deal with that sort of a thing. So, there's a little bit of a balance there, I think, that's worth considering. And as such, I just throw that as an, as an idea. That would be one potential change for you to consider tonight. We could make that adjustment very easily if you feel like it's necessary in those cases where those four spaces are provided in that tandem format, perhaps to require a fifth space on the property as well. We did run that by the Planning Commission on their public hearing on this item, and they recommended that we simply stick with the four spaces. So, that's the recommendation that the Planning Commission offered. And I think that's it for me. Again, I appreciate your patience, appreciate the involvement that the community's had. John Little, our building official's here tonight. Brandon Snyder from our office has quite a bit of experience in dealing with accessory apartments in some other communities that have little different programs as well. We're happy to answer any questions that you have, and this is a public hearing.
Dave?
Thank you.
Do you mind if we hold your questions until after we have our public hearing? Or if you want to talk to, are you okay with that?
It won't change, but yeah, go ahead. It's public first.
All right. Sounds good. All right, entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I move we go into public hearing.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone in the audience that would like to come and address this issue?
I move.
Take an order of this.
State your name.
Kent Clark, resident. Uh, just a question to, to Dave about if, are you gonna require the people that move in have a different utility account as a tenant? I didn't hear that being addressed. And then, it says utility account.
Separate electric meter.
No, I, it's right.
Utility.
There's not a utility, there's not electric meter, but is there gonna be a separate utility account that's gonna be required to the tenant? The second one is, there's not impact fees, is, how would it be different than, somebody builds a duplex and the owner lives in a duplex, are they not gonna be a two-unit for, for the impact fee on a duplex? Would it be a similar situation of a, of a tenant that would be in there?
Since we go out of public hearing, we'll have a reminder that question for you. Thank you, resident Kent Clark. Anything else? Anyone else?
I make a motion that we go out of public hearing.
A motion by council member Beck.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nargel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dave, would you like to address Mr. Clark's comments?
As we'd expect, great questions. The separate utilities, we had, I think, some really healthy discussions relative to the separate metering idea and the need for the city to require separate accounts somehow. And we were told that that's a great thing to leave to landlords and tenants to address. So, I don't think, at least relative to what we're proposing tonight, there wouldn't be a requirement to have separate utility accounts of any kind. So, as I've learned, it's fairly common, for example, for, um, you know, that owner of the property, the landlord, maybe it's just a 50-50 split with their tenants to pay utilities or something like that. And we did not hear that that is a problem for anybody that we talked to, again, in the focus groups that has had accessory apartments or that's been a tenant in an accessory apartment. And that certainly, I think, is the least impactful way, you know, in terms of needing to make modifications to a structure or to do anything like that to, to make that happen. Now, you know, maybe a question back relative to what we do today for properties that have that separate dwelling unit, I think we charge a fee, a utility fee, like a second unit fee of some kind.
The utilities are billed per unit?
Per unit. So, if they're, sorry. So, the utilities are billed per unit, but there's not necessarily, if you have an accessory apartment, you don't pay an automatic surcharge of some kind, like a $25 fee or?
Yeah, so, at the beginning, but that's it.
That's it, okay. So, that's another thing that we talked about. So, um, I do know that some communities, if you have a, have a second, separate, excuse me, there are some communities that would charge some type of an extra fee on utility accounts if there's a second dwelling unit there, and I think it's usually a pretty nominal amount. But I think that's done, you know, just with the idea that it's a second unit and there's some additional, you know.
With the, the extra garbage can, they get charged for having an extra garbage can, if you ask for another can?
Well, I would assume that's how it would work. You'd just pay as if in any of your homes you have.
If they have a separate account, yes.
No, say if I, if I had an accessory apartment, I've got one can now, accessory apartment, and I requested another can, so I had two cans, don't I get charged that extra can?
Yeah.
So, that's, that would address that before you can.
Um.
What about his?
Cable and internet.
No, duplex.
Yeah, so, the way that we're recommending this be addressed relative to impact fees, it would be very distinct from a duplex, three-plex, four-plex, 12-plex, or anything like that. They would be charged the multifamily impact fee for those different uses. Accessory apartments would not. And that's frankly something that, from an impact perspective, I feel very, very comfortable with. I think the impact really is different with accessory apartments over time than what you get with rental units. And, you know, just the prospect of, of them having an impact on the community, but that's certainly something for you guys to consider. One thing that I don't want to, you know, maybe go overboard discussing, but I think this program and the changes that, again, we're recommending that you consider will be successful if people are induced to come through the front door and to apply to have an accessory apartment legally registered with the city and to do the different things that are required to get to that point. And for every property owner that doesn't do that, we will be expending resources, we will be creating hardships, we will be dealing with situations that I think we're well-served to try to avoid as best as we can. And, uh, changing somehow the approach that we take relative to impact fees, I think is, I think is a really big part of getting to the point to where we've removed the significant obstacles that have kept people maybe off the radar. And maybe we've put too much emphasis on that, but I think that's a big part of what we're trying to accomplish with what we want you to consider.
He just, he just answered it right then, because that was our, that was our goal, is to try to make this so that those that aren't compliant now are and will come through the door and, and we can help them. So, thanks, Dave. Appreciate all your work.
Maybe this is a follow-up, that we had a great discussion earlier today, Steve Adams, Jr., Jason Sant, myself, Brandon, Seth, talking about those situations where somebody's not gonna have 8,000 square feet, you know, and even with the loosening that we're recommending that you consider, how do we deal with those circumstances where somebody can't be legal and either they have an apartment that hasn't been legal before and we have something to deal with, or they want to have an apartment and they don't qualify, and, and we're very sensitive to, um, those situations and how much that means to tenants and landlords. And, uh, they won't be easy to deal with. We know that, and we're trying to come up with, I think, the, the lightest-touch approach that we can when it comes to enforcement of these provisions. And we recognize that there's gonna be a need to enforce these rules, I think, much more carefully, with more diligence than we have our current regulations. So, that's another side, maybe, of trying to loosen things and yet, make sure that people are doing things the right way.
Any other questions, comments?
Just one quick question. What benefit is it for citizens to, basically to be on file with the city that they have a, a legal accessory dwelling?
I imagine it varies from case to case, but, for example, we get calls, emails, letters, for example, from lenders occasionally that want to verify that a property has a legal accessory apartment. Somebody's maybe trying to qualify for a mortgage or something like that on the property, which incidentally is probably how our office most often finds out, that somebody has an illegal accessory apartment.
Sure.
On a property. And, you know, the idea, at least in part with having the registry, is providing a property that has a legal accessory apartment, an opportunity in some way to advertise that legality. So, if they're, you know, maybe looking to rent it or something like that, we could certainly help by publishing a list of properties that have legal accessory apartments online. We typically would only do that with the property owner's consent. Peace of mind, I think, too, is, is an important part of it for people, just having, and I'm not saying that they're... not saying that there will be a piece of paper that we give people that says you're legal, we might, but, you know, that type of assurance, I think, for a lot of people is meaningful.
Does the city keep inventory of the legal accessory dwellings in any fashion at all? Or?
It's been so loose in the past, I'd almost have to say no. Aside from properties where we've provided explicit correspondence to somebody that says this is a legal accessory apartment, or maybe just through some of our addressing that we've done, we really haven't done that. And I think that's step one, if these changes get employed, is developing that database and maintaining it.
Right. Well, just, I guess, my own thoughts on this, another, another thing that may help, and you know, correct me, Mike, with your experiences with the, with the league and stuff, is another benefit actually is for the whole city and property owners in general, is by registering your accessory dwelling, should this pass, I'll put that out, should this pass, by registering your accessory dwelling, the city could then have an inventory of additional inventory of housing within the city. If you've watched the news and seen what the legislature has suggested and been doing with regards to housing in the state, there's a housing shortage, some have even said a housing crisis. But nonetheless, the legislature has taken steps and is looking at, at being the land use authority for housing. Basically, that means that they would tell cities what to do with regards to what buildings, what houses, what apartments are allowed within city limits, within certain neighborhoods. And so by registering your accessory dwelling, it affords the city the opportunity to go to the state and say, the city has grown from this much housing to this much housing, and it allows the city, along with other cities in the League of Cities and Towns, to be able to tell the legislature to, well, I won't mix words, to back off. And basically allow cities to, to handle and allow the housing within their cities and neighborhoods. We live in the neighborhoods that everyone else does, and so we, you know, collectively we all have a good feel of what should be where versus a legislator up in Salt Lake City from Clearfield voting yes on something to put a, an 80, you know, an 80-unit apartment complex, two doors down from the mayor's house, or from your house, or my house. And so, I just kind of, thinking, thinking along those lines, please register your, your accessory dwellings, because that does give the city a lot more power and leeway with regard to what the legislature's trying to do.
I really appreciate that, and in fact, Brandon Snyder most recently worked in Linden, and I think Linden City, communities are required to have a modern income housing plan, which is some kind of a roadmap to allowing for housing for people that only earn a certain amount of income per household. And the program that Linden used to satisfy their requirement, you know, relative to that plan, has been accessory apartments. That certainly becomes an important part of our plan. And then the reality, I think, as well, is that we won't see hundreds of apartments built next year, you know, new contemporary apartments, let's say, in Spanish Fork, might see a chunk built, but we might see hundreds of accessory apartments built. That easily could happen much more quickly and have an impact on the current housing situation in Utah. And maybe do such, or do so in such a way that it really doesn't change the nature of the community, like having a 500, you know, apartment complex might, and some different things like that. So, I, not only from, you know, kind of that perspective of satisfying the, what's become a legal obligation that we have as a city, but also just the practical side of this is a way to make a difference, I think it's a great step.
Great, thank you.
I have a comment echoing what Kier said, I like all of that. And then I just want to extend my appreciation to you and your staff, I mean, this has been a long time in the making, like you said, it's been a concern of all of ours with the housing crisis to help local residents, our kids, find a place to live. And with that being said, I personally would like to see an added parking somehow on, on property. I think the tandem parking is going to be tricky, so I would say let's require a fifth parking spot.
Is there where to put a caveat?
I agree with that, only because, and maybe this came out in your conversations earlier today when you had Chief Adams in the room, but parking on lawn has subsequently happened in a lot of areas in town where tandem just doesn't work for me, so I'm just going to pull on my lawn, and then, you know, now I'm not blocking maybe my wife from getting out when I have to play musical cars. So I completely agree with Stacy on that. And that was, my other comment was, did anything else come out of the meeting, maybe with Chief or John earlier today, as you guys, you mentioned you had a good conversation that, that you thought was worth?
Yeah, we ultimately really just got to the point, this was really, I think all of us following Junior's lead, in trying to decide whether the code enforcement approach is better in the civil realm or the criminal realm. And I think as staff, we really want to explore the idea of dealing, dealing with issues civilly as best as we can. And I'm not the expert, I can regurgitate what I heard, but I heard that that potentially is faster. It maybe gives us more control over the process, but yet at the same time, there's probably some expense involved in having that system set up, getting an administrative law judge of some kind involved in those sorts of things. And we do have the expert here, so, but that, that's what we, I think, right now are kind of leaning towards, is that fair to say?
And when you say enforcing, are you saying to get this registered? Because then there's also the enforcing of parking on the street all the time as well.
Yeah.
And those are two different enforcing.
Thank you. So I'm really talking about those situations where somebody has an illegal apartment and it can't be made legal, or it's not being made legal, and we have to deal with that really delicate issue. I can't, I don't know what would be best on the other issues.
And maybe that's my question, maybe it's not written in this, and I, I frankly think that the, this is probably a little bit of a living document, you know, when we get into some stuff and, and just like ordinances are changed and updated in the city, that we probably do that a little bit. Unfortunately, we, we, we have to look at what the worst-case scenario Brandon brought up of parking on your lawn and saying, well, that's my property, and then the lawn's, you know, jacked up and everybody's mad in a neighborhood. I guess that's where my question, is it written in here as far as, if somebody registers, and now we know that's an ADU, the enforceability of it? And again, I'm a believer that that person cares about their property that's living there and is still going to care about it when somebody's living in the basement. And I think that lends to that avenue rather than maybe, you know, a group of affordable housing set off somewhere where it's a HOA, or it's a, or it's somebody else supposed to take care of it. But I like a whole lot better an owner on the property that says, now this is my house and we're going to take care of it, and if you're not taking care of it, next renter up, right? I like, I like that part of it, of the self-policing aspect of it, but I hope what people realize, and in all the junk we like to collect, you should see Brandon's garage, how much junk's in his garage. I thought mine was messy.
Stop it.
But at some point, it's got to be, especially if you invite another resident on your property, it's got to be, one of us is getting a storage unit, there's only so much stuff, right?
Right.
That can go in my garage with our two cars, or our one car, or whatever you have, three cars if you've got a teenager, and, and you being able to park off-street like we're supposed to be, or else I'm going to get, what, I'm going to get fined as far as the, the property owner? So, the income I'm making, you know, the 800 bucks a month I'm renting my downstairs for, now turns into only 700 that month, a month, or six, is that, have we got there yet as far as specifics, or is that, we are there?
No, I don't think we necessarily have everything mapped out along those lines, except that part of the value, in my opinion, of having some type of an annual check would be that, for example, if we had a complaint about parking.
Sure.
Property that has an accessory apartment, then I think our best opportunity to fix that, I mean, let's say that they had four parking stalls when, you know, they were allowed to be a part of the registry, and they've done something to remove two of those parking spaces, then they would not get registered again, and we would start down that path of code enforcement, you know, however that, that looks and works. And in the meantime, and I think it might have been Seth that talked about, you know, just the idea that people aren't allowed to have their cars on streets during snowstorms and those types of things, that that might be a tail-tail sign, and that might be an opportunity maybe to deal with the parking issue a little bit earlier if the spaces aren't available off, off, excuse me, off-street, so cars are parked on-street, when, you know, we just have some of those kind of checks that we do. I think to a large extent, it's going to be case by case, though, just relative to how we become aware of the problem and whether it's just a matter of a simple phone call to a property owner and it gets fixed, or we have to do other things. There's a broad gamut there of, I think, tools that we have at our disposal to use, citations, so certainly the criminal side's part of that.
Well, and that, and I don't want that to be misconstrued, that I'm not in favor of the general direction we're going. Again, I think it's a somewhat of a living document and alerting curve that we're going to have, as we had a water department in here, it reminded me and Kier, and I mentioned it to each other, how important that was for our community to lead out on something like that. People didn't think so at the time, that 13 bucks a month for pressurized irrigation that they weren't going to see for a year or something.
Yeah.
Was a big deal for people and a big pill for people to swallow, but it's $50 million, you know, savings later or better, that it was the correct decision for our community, and it's leading out before the state says, this is what you have to do, and putting, putting tough situations on cities in general. I think the same things, I couldn't agree more with Kier, I think the same things coming from the state on affordable housing, and I think this helps us, it helps our community in that way, to the children aspect you spoke to, too.
So, so going back to the parking, on our duplexes and fourplexes, do we, what's the parking requirements on there? Will we allow tandem parking there?
We would, yes. And I can check on the parking requirement.
So, my question is, if tandem parking's okay for a duplex and a fourplex, why is it different, why are we adding another parking spot for an accessory apartment?
We may want to point and counterpoint here. For a duplex, if you think of some duplexes in town, they don't really have driveways and garages like, some do, but I'm thinking of a fourplex, they don't typically have a garage like you have at your house, for example, right? So their, their parking requirements are different, they might have parking stalls and such. You have some buildings that are built like duplexes and they have garages together and the house on the one side, or the house together and the garages on the outside, and those don't have tandem parking because I have my garage associated with my unit that's connected to your house and your garage. The tandem really comes into play where you have two people living in maybe the same line, if you will, so.
But, and I guess mine would be more to a, required to a duplex, I don't, let me cut you off, come back here.
I felt cut off.
Well, good.
Just kidding.
As long as you fell offended, that's all I care.
I was done.
I'm probably more to a duplex, because a duplex isn't going to have those parking so, and that's probably more related to what an accessory apartment would look like.
Right.
So I'm, I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah.
As a question, if, if we're allowing tandem parking for a duplex, why are we requiring more parking for a accessory apartment?
So, for me, the, the question really is about access to the parking stall, and if, if I have to coordinate with my landlord, who's parking in the garage today, that's not going to happen, therefore I'm going to maybe park in the street. Unless I have, my unit has this part of the driveway and this part of the garage, and upstairs has this part of the driveway and that part of the garage. I actually lived in a basement apartment in Pro, in Orem, when I was in college, and there was a three-car garage, and the third-car garage was mine as far as the basement unit was concerned. That's what they assigned to us, they actually walled it off completely, and I had that third-car garage. So I had, I knew I had a place that I could park, it was reserved for me. But, the tandem parking, so this is now Seth's opinion, but the tandem parking does create a concern for me as far as will the landlord and the tenant be able to coordinate and have true off-street parking, or will we see an increase in off-street parking, an increase in on-street parking, let me get my phrasing right, because of that basement apartment. That is a concern I have as well, we've, we've gone back and forth on it, I appreciate the planning commission's review of it, but I have a similar concern as, as some of you.
Just, you know, throwing it out.
I think that, my point was, what was the biggest concern through the survey and/or the planning commission and the city council throughout the last couple of years of this process? Yes, it all started because of safety, right? We discussed a building in another state that lives were lost because of things like this. So, I mean, safety is also very critical, but parking has been a huge.
Well, sure, there's no question about it. I just want to make sure we're not requiring something for one person in there, because what's going to happen is that duplex or that accessory apartment's going to have a duplex next to them, and they're saying, you're allowing them just to have tandem parking, why am I having to put another parking in for my stuff?
And, and this might change your perception a little bit. Right now, we just require two spaces per unit for a property that has an accessory apartment. If you have a duplex, we would require five, two and a half spaces per unit. They could be in tandem, but we would require that fifth.
Okay.
For a duplex, so that's.
If that's required, and that's, that's why, I just don't want someone to come in and say, wait a minute, you know, you're making me do something more than if I build a duplex.
Well, and you have a valid concern, I think, in the realm of saying, again, you're, you're talking about people renting their basements, that if, if everything was perfect in life, they'd probably say, I'd have that basement all to myself, not rent it to anybody, or, you know, or whatever. It's, in a practical matter, it's not going to be easy for a lot of people to call up XYZ Concrete and say, I need you to come rip out this side and pour me another pad, either. That's, you're, what's that, a thousand bucks? It's better than a thousand bucks?
No, yeah, it's.
Yeah, thousand bucks.
Plus, a lot more.
Chad's like, I wouldn't do it for a thousand.
And my concern, honestly and genuinely, the concern about parking is absolutely justified. Everything, today, the complaints that we get about accessory apartments, it's parking. We learn about accessory apartments because a neighbor feels like another neighbor shouldn't park in front of their home, that's how we find out about them. So, I don't want to sound like in any way I'm trying to downplay that, but I'm also worried from the perspective of, we are trying to find a path for people to get compliant.
Yeah.
And in some cases, it is a spatial issue relative to can you fit that fifth space? So, another thing that I'd maybe suggest that you consider is that the parking requirements maybe be tied to zoning. Right now, in the R16 and the R3 zones, you can have an accessory apartment with four parking spaces. Maybe we leave it at that and simply in the other zoning districts, where by definition at least, people have more space, they have more room, and I think as well, in what really are the more contemporary neighborhoods, people have a different expectation for how things happen on the street and, and that sort of a thing. So, you know, maybe looking at it from that perspective where there's one parking requirement for the urban core of the city, and the parking requirement's higher for, you know, more of the suburban part of the community.
I like that idea.
Maybe that, that additional space when tandem's employed could come into play there.
Because most of these accessory apartments in the older part of town are probably older.
Grandfathered, right, and they're already grandfathered anyway, they're not going to be required to change, so.
So, but if, you know, someone bought an older home in that area and wanted to have an accessory apartment, then these requirements would be, they'd have to, you know. So I like that, because those typically are smaller lots than you've got in your other personally.
The width of the street doesn't have anything to do with the zoning, though, right? Like, Kier's road is super wide, so the whole neighborhood could park on the street, and no one would be affected, but some of the.
You could sell cars on his street, nobody would even notice.
Right.
You could land airplanes on the street next door.
Some other neighborhoods are really tight, and if both neighbors on both sides are parking, there's room for one car to go down the middle. So that's my concern, and I don't know if that has anything to do with zoning.
I think, I think that's absolutely the nature of the complaints that we get, people are concerned about that. And in some of those neighborhoods, you also have lots that are larger, and providing that nine-by-18 slab of concrete is, just functionally and spatially, it's more achievable than a lot of the properties around here where maybe you only have 50 feet of lot width. So the math just is what it is about what you can fit, and. And, and I say all of that with the understanding as well that we know not every property is going to qualify. So we're trying to get to a point that's, that's a reasonable balance, but that's.
I think this is a good start. You know, it's like Mike said, that, you know, here's our first stab at it. You know, as we get down the road, we might have to do some tweaking to it and adding and taking away. So I think we want to do as the best we can right off the bat and, and know that it's not, probably not going to be perfect, but hey, it's, we've done our best so far and we'll keep on going.
Is there a way to, to force through ordinance, like a two-strikes, three-strikes rule type of thing that you have the, regardless of the zone, you have the parking if we choose to do it by zone, but you have the parking by ordinance. But I'm just thinking along the lines of enforcement, if there are two verified complaints, that's two strikes or three strikes, whatever it is, that once you hit that threshold, then by ordinance, you are required to add the fifth stall or the sixth stall or whatever the case may be. Is that, is that something that we can legally do?
You know, we can do that. We have it in the draft.
It's a good idea. It gets, it gets a little bit tricky sometimes, maybe a little bit political. There's a lot of regulations on the state. From the state when you get into the, like, good landlord programs, but something, I, I would suggest we not start with something like that. But as we go through the process, if we find some problems, that may be a direction we need to go. And there are cities throughout the state, more Salt Lake County and Davis County, that have been down this road a lot longer than us, that we can learn from.
Seth, while you're up there, what has been discussed maybe between you and Scott as you've thought about how to, how to bring in people, how to entice, how to make people?
I'll let Scott and Dave do that. They've been the ones.
Okay. And, and then just before that, my last comment would be, I, I agree with it probably being easier to change the parking as we go earlier and I'm, I'm content with this document. I don't want to slow that. I don't want to slow that. The, the momentum that we have here. And that being said, how do we, how do we get people to come in and register, if you will?
Inform us, please.
So I think Dave had mentioned previously one way that we felt that we could entice or induce individuals to, to get registered and that we could have a registry online, a, a list online of those dwellings that are legally approved within the city. And so that becomes a resource for them to not only verify for potential tenants or for mortgage purposes, but also as a way to advertise their dwelling here within the city for a potential tenant. So that's one way that we thought we could try and induce or encourage individuals to, to get registered. I don't know that we talked about any other ideas. I don't know if you have any thoughts that you've thought of, Dave, but.
I appreciate Scott's involvement in getting to where we are now relative to soliciting input and helping to get the word out. And I think it's just the channels that we've used, you know, like you said, really to try to encourage that.
All right. Well, I, I think I'm ready to, to make a motion, but I think it's along the lines of what Dave maybe suggested. So you might have to help me out with some language, but I think the current zones that, that they're allowed in the R3 and R16, which is the, are the older blocks of Spanish Fork, right? I think it would be tough to say, hey, that, you need to create a fifth spot there where some of those just won't exist practically. But I would be comfortable doing the, the fifth on the new zones that we're expanding to and say, okay, up in those neighborhoods that now will have this ability. Yeah, you got LAD.
Narrower roads.
Yeah, yeah, you got narrower roads, but you also got some new, newer areas of town where, you know, people, people could tear up that stuff or sometimes it's not even, you know, I've seen a lot of places where it's not, there's not grass planted there, there's not anything planted there and you might just have to pour some concrete. I, I appreciate reading the minutes and seeing, I think Richard Davis, Commissioner Davis has got a valid concern that there might be some blobs of concrete that, that, that don't maybe meet his, yeah, his, his perfect standard. But I think we'll fill our way through it a little bit. I think, I think it strikes a balance to say the fifth spot in these newer areas and where the narrower roads are and, and keep it to the four spots and.
Go for it.
Okay. So with that change that I mumbled through, I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 1219, amendments to Title 15 regarding accessory apartments.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. This is a roll call vote. We'll go with Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scovis.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
All right. You've got that, junior? Okay. Lovely. Thank.
Yes.
All right.
Additional parking in the new zones.
In the new zone. So, so our three and our one-six would stay the same.
And that's where it's in tandem, as I understand it.
Correct.
Tandem, so that'd be the four. Okay, so are you resident or are you city employee? Okay. All right. FY19 budget review, revision number three. I just, I get confused when I see.
Holy cow. You were off.
Geez, I was off.
You were way off. The licks are the boys.
I did the scouts earlier. Ken?
Good thing they didn't stay. Better hurry and get done with this budget so it doesn't keep going up.
It's actually going down.
Oh.
A million dollar. So this is, it's kind of like at the credits at the end of the movie. So the year's almost over and.
Everyone's leaving.
There's a short, John. There's a short.
This might be a marvel.
Okay. The budget is a revision of 19, which is, we're in the last half of the month of the last month. And as we adjusted, as we built the 2020 budget for next year, some projects weren't done, some rolled forward, some changed. And so this is ending the year we're in to get the budget closer to an actual budget that's going to be there. There were some adjustments ups in some funds, some departments, and there are some adjustments down in some departments. In the end, the net was to reduce the budget from 110 million to 109 million, so about a million dollars lower in the budget. Stay tuned. Some of those projects will be coming around in next year's budget. This, I'll just walk you through quickly. The general funds decreased by about 300,000 and the enterprise funds decreased about.
Eighty-five.
Eight, eighty-two and then the miscellaneous funds increased just a little bit. Okay? So should walk through those. In the end, the new budget is 109,400,037. But I want to jump you to, just to educate you and, and update you. Turn back to about the fifth or sixth page.
Is it fifth or sixth?
Fifth, I think. Capital projects. I'm going to walk you through a couple of the capital projects because if you look on that first page, we've been doing quite a bit of capital projects in these funds. I want to give you an update kind of where they're at. Maybe Chris can help us find out where we're at. So some of these projects have been going for three years and some of them are finally ending and we're finally getting reimbursed for some big amounts. So we've been fronting a lot of money and some of that money's coming back. Will be repurposed and retooled and used on the next project. So some of us kind of cycling money that we fronted. We get grant money back because we have to front the money first. On the first one, the land acquisition, this is some general fund money that we've, we've put into this capital projects anticipating purchasing some property for the library. We're waiting to see what actually is the amount that we're going to be paying. We use this fund also to purchase the, you see in that first column there, 107. We bought some parking lot down by Zion's Bank and we bought a parking lot by MVP. There's some other land purchases. When we feel it's strategic enough that the city would be interested in this property, this is the fund that we've been buying land purchases out of. Okay, the second one is Canyon, Spanish Fork Parkway and Canyon Creek. This is working with the developer and developing the property around where the lows will be coming. And the developer is paying the city back for a majority of those expenses to move the dump garbage, to repurpose that property so those will build their building there and the developer is paying us back. So we've been working on this for the past two years and we're getting money back now from the developer as far as the money that we fronted in those areas. The other one is river reclamation, our river trails, has to do with the, the trail from, I think, dripping rock up to reservoir, part of it. Poplar Lane Trail Area, Trailhead. So those are some grant monies that are, the city's fronted in buying large portions of that, those properties and improvements. So that's another capital project. The next one is, we've created this fire station for our second fire and we've incurred architect fees and some purchasing of some of the houses that are there anticipating we're going to be building a new fire station. And we've also trying to save enough money from other sources, selling a piece of property, taking some, hold the property tax rate. Last year, we put 145,000 in from the general fund. You can see that listed there, about, near the bottom. This year it was 145. This next year, we're holding the rate again, going to put another 150 towards that. And the next year, we're putting another 150. So we're building up so we can have some funds available that we can build that fire station without raising property tax dramatically or issuing bonds, we hope. So as we going to incur that six or seven million dollar price tag for the fire station, whatever that might be, as they're getting the bids ready for that, then we're starting to squirrel away some money for the citizens to have that fire station on that east side of town. So this capital project will keep going for, for probably two years or three years until we get that fire station built. So we'll gradually build that. And the Fund 47 in the capital project is for the top of Center Street. We've had this one for several years. It redid the, the bridge and now we're redoing from the bridge down to the middle school, Diamond Fork Junior High. And that's, project's still in the works. We are getting some grant money back, reimbursing. We bought eight, nine, 10 houses? How many? 10, 10 houses. And some of those funds are being reimbursed back to us. Planning to repurpose some of those funds for the fire station also. So as we do that project along, people will notice the houses are missing on the top of Center Street and you wonder why the street light is out in the middle of the block because eventually that road's going to be widened and it'll be a better access for the top of Center Street. Anyway, that covers, I just wanted to touch on a couple of those capital projects because they are ongoing. But this year, in the year we're in right now, we're just finishing out. We are getting some revenues back that we can pay the city back for some of those things. So in the bottom line, it's approving a budget revision. It's a decrease in the revision to 109,437. That's all.
Thanks, Kent.
I move we go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in public hearing. Anyone that would like to come and talk to us, even the resident who would talk to like us about this?
I move we go out.
I got a question about that guy that just did that budget.
Here. Get candy for coming up.
Just complained about the work he did.
He used to give candy to scouts when you were young. Remember that?
So I'm reciprocating there.
No, I, I think that guy did a great job.
I move we go out of public hearing.
I hope so. I got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move we approve FY19 budget revision number three. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scovis, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. I guess you did a pretty good job, it passed. Okay, new business. Proposed change to zoning on several properties in the vicinity of Del Monte Road and Arrowhead Trail intersection.
We've had a few discussions with the city council over, again, some period of time relative to some zoning that we have in the community that I think is obsolete. I think many of us would agree that, for example, in the vicinity of Canyon Creek where we have some industrial zoning that probably doesn't fit in really well with things that are happening in that part of the community or maybe with the old Sugar Beet Factory property where there's a pallet factory today or even at some other locations like the ones we'll talk about tonight. Changes to the community are such that the zoning that's been around for decades no longer really works. And this particular part of the community is one of several that we think we need to start to analyze to determine what changes make sense to make. So for purposes of what we want to talk about tonight, I'm just going to touch on six particular areas that are in the vicinity of the Arrowhead Trail and Del Monte Road intersection and to give maybe some thoughts that we have in staff about things that might be worth considering and then ask the council's permission to initiate specific zone changes for some of these properties. So from that, quick introduction, I'm going to start with one that I think is really, really easy. The American Leadership Academy. Right now, it's zoned three different ways. And part of the zoning does concern us as staff, that industrial two zoning that exists. Thank you. They're immediately adjacent to Del Monte Road. We feel strongly should be changed. And charter schools, public schools are kind of unique animals where zoning really doesn't matter, which for me is just one more reason to change the zoning. So Brandon reached out to leadership there at the school and described, you know, the prospect that we're undertaking to change the zoning to public facilities on that property and didn't get much of a reaction. Is that fair to say? So we'd love to begin the process on that immediately. To have that. I think so. And that's probably a good reaction given the fact that zoning really doesn't have a lot of impact on that property. Why do we care? I think it's really just that industrial two zone that I think it's time to, to have that changed. We are working right now with a developer who has applied to have the zoning changed on this property. They'd like to build some townhomes there. They've applied for the change to R3. That's something that I would guess you probably won't see until August. Probably will see it in August though, that particular proposal. And in light of that being in the pipeline, in process, I don't think there's anything for us to do relative to that other than to just let it run its course and it'll come to you ready for a decision at some point, again, in the next couple of months. We have a landmark here with the Leland Mill and we had a discussion with the planning commission about these, just pretty casual discussion and I really appreciated some things that they said about this particular property and, and what it means to the community. How it is a connection, a functional working connection to Spanish Fork as an agricultural center. center and a hub for different agricultural industries. So there's a strong reluctance to do anything from a zoning perspective that would impact how the mill operates and how it could, how it could continue to operate over time. So this is one where we as staff, I think, would like to take some more time really to think through what may make the most sense there for the mill from a zoning perspective so that we're, for example, not making it a non-conforming use, which potentially could have some detrimental impact on them and their ability to continue with that use over time. So I'm asking for a little bit of patience on that one. Maybe let us take a month or two to sort that out and come back. And similarly with IFA. Right now zoned I2, very little that they do. In fact, I'm not really aware of anything that happens on that property. It requires the I2 zone. I think frankly, the C2 zone probably works really, really well. And the difference for the neighborhood and the city in going from an industrial two zone, which is a really, really permissive zone, and that's the zone that for the most part we allow the most obnoxious uses that you can think of to happen in. So going from that zone to having the property zoned for retail development or retail uses and some things that are maybe incidental to those retail uses, I think is a very significant step in the right direction. And I think we could do that in such a way that it would not have any, again, adverse impact on IFA's ability to continue to operate. And of course, we heard the same thing from planning commissioners about that, you know, that is something of an institution, you know, again, it serves a particular part of the community that we don't want to lose. We certainly don't want to accelerate, you know, that changes that make it harder for people to operate, like losing a business of that nature might. But also with this one here, we'd like to take a little bit more time to make sure that we're covering all the bases and we're not doing anything that would be adverse to their ability to continue to operate. The Fritzy property, it's kind of unique. There are really two halves to it. So the idea of changing the zoning on the Fritzy property for their back 30 acres or so, this land right here, I might have exaggerated when I said 30 acres, it might not be nearly that big. This back part vacant pasture land, changing that zoning from industrial to maybe the rural residential zone with the idea that ultimately we'd like to see a development like Sun Rocks Planning across the street, some kind of residential development. I think that's really easy to do. I think questions about whether this is the right time to change the zoning on the rest of it, you know, maybe to try to encourage some change of use there, that's one that I think is going to require some deliberation as well. So again, we might want to take more time with this one. And I guess that's five. So number six, the property round in the corner, you saw a proposal here just a little over a year ago to build storage units on that property. They're allowed in the I2 zone. They are really only allowed in the I2 zone. And there are a number of other uses that frankly, I think are a lot scarier than storage units that somebody could today by right do on that property. So changing the zoning from I2 to something else on that corner, I think, is important. And I think it's probably one that we'd want to move on sooner than later. And I think it's also important as we go through that process to be deliberate, given the fact that we know that there are some folks that want to put that property to a different use. And we've had some conversations this past week that have confirmed that, you know, they would like to pursue that project with the storage units like we talked about a year or so ago. But we'd like to move forward and have discussions with the planning commission about changing the zoning on both that corner piece, that's I2, and the ALA pieces with the, pretty much immediately with the idea that we would address the others here in upcoming weeks or months, but certainly sooner than later.
Just need our okay to say go do it?
I think so, yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, go do it.
We need, I think we need a motion.
What?
The ordinance says it was initiated by the council or the city of justice. Right here, we have to come to an option.
All right. I would entertain a motion. Motion to approve changes to the zoning on several properties in the vicinity of Del Monte Road and Arrowhead Trail intersection.
To initiate.
Motion to proceed as the zoning changes Del Monte, Del Monte Road and Arrowhead Trail. How's that work?
In the whole area.
Okay. Perfect. Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by?
Second.
Councilman Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Resolution 19-13, modifying the personnel policy manual.
So this is a subject that I think we all look forward to one day, and that is retirement.
No.
No? You never want to retire, Brandon?
No. Show me where it says retirement in the Bible. Never says it. Never supposed to retire, Tyler. But go ahead, it's all right. It's ruined your...
Well, you won't have to worry about these benefits.
It's about running a good race, finishing the race.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, see? I'm never retiring.
So really two changes to the retirement policy that we're proposing. The first change has to do with the retirement investment options that our employees have. Back in 2011, Utah Retirement Systems made it so that if you were hired on after July 1st, 2011, you were considered what was called a Tier Two employee. At that time, we made some revisions to our policy that prohibited Tier Two employees from contributing to a non-Utah Retirement System account that the city has. So what we're proposing here is to give some additional options to our Tier Two employees to contribute their own contributions to, not the city's contributions, but the employee themselves can allocate funding to that. This would allow them to contribute more on an annual basis to a Roth account because through the Utah Retirement Systems, they can only contribute to a Roth IRA. Mike probably knows how much you can put into there a year with all of his studies he's been doing, but $5,500 is the max you can put in a year in a Roth IRA. With a Roth 401K, you can put up to $19,000 a year. So this will give our employees opportunity to contribute more to their retirement if they would like to do that. So that's part one. Part two is in regards to retirement. So as employees get closer to retirement, to try to shelter some taxes, one thing that we're proposing in this policy is if they give us six months' notice that they are planning to retire, which will also give us some time for succession planning, then we'll allow them to cash out their leave time that they've accrued in two separate calendar years to try and help them in that way. So those are really the two main changes and then there were just a couple of little cleanup items that we had in there. Any questions?
Are we Tier One or Tier Two?
As far as the council?
It says elected officials Tier One and Tier Two. I don't know the difference.
It depends. So when were you, Mayor, when did you start serving? Was it before 2011? So Brandon, if it was before 2011, then you'd be?
I campaigned in 11 and supported in 12.
So you'd be Tier Two.
So and Kier and Steve are One.
Unless, well, in Kier's situation, you'd be Tier One because with you working for the school district and already being part of the URS, then you'd be Tier One. So if you had any experience before that, Brandon, with the URS, then you, once a Tier One, you're always a Tier One. So.
Once a... I'll leave that.
Yeah, you leave that, please.
Where was he going with that? Does anybody know? Okay.
You did, you got into it, you're not going to...
I'm sorry, Tyler. That's two times I was not.
All right.
Caught you off guard.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Any questions, comments, editorials? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 19-13, modifying the personnel policy manual.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Scobes. Roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Did I get everybody?
Aye.
Councilman Scobes, I already told you. All right. RAP Program Grant Approvals FY 2020.
Hi, guys. First off, I'm going to take the liberty to detour from my agenda item and just say, Stacy?
Yes.
The U City Council in our community is fabulous.
Thank you.
You already knew that, but you know they showed up in hordes down at the health fair and we used them for everything. I mean, they were, they were great. We had them all over the place and there was a lot of them.
I'll relay that to them.
So let them know, we really appreciate, appreciate them and what they did to enhance our event because we needed them and they were, they were rock stars, so.
Lining up right at the finish line.
Thank you.
Thirty of them.
Was there thirty? I know there was a bunch because we, there was a bunch here and we'd pull a bunch off and say, go help do this and they were, they were rock stars. We had probably, our ticket count was about close to 1,000. So that's about how many people we anticipate were down there. So very successful. Thanks again, you guys, everybody for your help. So this is just a review of what we presented two weeks ago. The RAP Committee presented recommendations for the council to review in preparation for this meeting. So the only change that I have there, I think I mentioned to you once before, the Nevo Holiday Chorus and Orchestra was funded $3,000 by the city through the general fund and we have shifted, and the committee recommended we fund them 2,000. So we've shifted that money out of the general fund and this is the appropriate place to fund them. So I raised them to 3,000 and we took that out of the general fund for next year. So they still have increased their funding to, by $2,000. By three. No, we increased it by two because they originally had three. Yeah. So, yeah. So basically, if you guys have any questions, you've had a couple of weeks to look at that and I haven't heard from any of you, so I assumed it was all really good.
They did a really fabulous job and I've talked to two of them that were on the board and they reported.
What'd they say? I'm curious.
They had fun.
Because they were, they were very impressive.
They were.
They worked, they worked hard at this.
They said they want more time in the future, not to just sit down that night and try and make...
And I explained, they realized they'll have more time.
Yes, and yeah, and that's what they said.
And Richard especially, because he had to hurry and get up and leave and didn't really have a chance to review, but the rest of the committee sat and really dug in pretty deep into these during that time period.
Our work session with this and listening to how they thought things through and...
They were, they were great.
It was good.
So we appreciate them, but we realize we were a little rushed this time and that won't happen the next go around, but, so thank you for that feedback.
Yeah.
We appreciate them, they're outstanding.
Advertising, just I want to make sure that the citizens know that this isn't money coming from property tax, things like that. This is the RAP tax that they voted for, that, very specific to those things. And so any advertising we can do for these and ongoing, we've talked about that.
Yeah, absolutely. And it is a requirement of any recipients of these funds to have advertisement on there. We're in the process of creating a brand that will go on everything. I mean, any physical facilities that are built, any programs or flyers that are distributed, it'll be on there. Yes.
I just took the words right out of my mouth.
Oh, wow, I knew I felt somebody hovering over my shoulder, so.
And is this something we'll be sharing? I mean, everyone's on social media.
So by the way, Scott Aylott is the one that's working on the...
Will we be sharing this like on social media and things so the public can see this? Because there's another million that might not be watching us tonight, that may be on Facebook.
We'll catch the other million. So there was, just for the public, there was $100,000 requested about, that represents about $79,000 worth of funding. So we're anxious for this and appreciate it. This is going to really, really help our arts programs flourish, as you can see. So we're excited to get them, get them launched.
Good.
So I just, I just need an approval to utilize those funds and then July 1st, we can...
Do you want your two cents?
Two cents, Gordon.
Only two?
Did you miss your two cents? Doesn't get it.
That's you did.
All right. There is no other questions, comments? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve RAP Program Grant Approvals by 2020. Hurrah.
A motion by Councilman Sergeant Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go spend the money. Ordinance 13-19, amending the makeup of the rodeo committee.
Would you like to cover this one, Mr. Mayor?
I'll let you have your day in the sun.
My day in the sun. So Junior modified this ordinance and updated it. The committee has decided to increase their committee by one person and add one at-large position to the committee, now making the committee a total of eight members. And that's the purpose for the ordinance change.
Very well.
How's that? And I believe you can handle the second part by yourself, right?
I think I can.
Okay.
Once we got to do the first part, then I'll take the second.
We got to do it first, that's correct.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance 13-19, amending the makeup of the rodeo committee.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Right, with that, I would like to appoint Doug Ford to the rodeo committee.
I move we approve Mayor's appointment to the rodeo committee.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation on land transaction.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now adjourned to closed session. Thank you.